This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, this is the planning commission meeting. It's Tuesday, February 8th, 5:30 PM. Call to order. Or we'll call, sorry.
Okay, Mary Benton.
Here.
William Colston.
Here.
Paisley Howerton.
Here.
Brandon Jennings.
Here.
Eden Coon.
Here.
Kyle Lewis. Cody Richardson. Joni Spicer.
Here.
And Tom Weasley.
All right, there'll be a move on to public comments. Persons who wish to address the planning commission regarding items on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes.
Doesn't look like we have anybody here.
It's like we don't have anybody here. Set agenda. As far as meetings, minutes go for last month. You have motion to accept the meeting minutes. Meeting minutes from January 11th have been approved. We'll move on to the consideration portion. Recommended representatives to the other boards.
Okay, we did some of this last month, but there was a couple that we didn't do. One of them is the traffic safety committee. Ian has been serving on that committee since Andy was not able to do it. So we're just trying to make sure we have representatives that is okay to continue doing that. If he wants to continue doing it, that's fine.
I don't mind. I would like to have kind of a stand in sometimes around town with work or time.
So I think we have to have an official member, so that's fine.
I think a parent alternate.
Yeah.
Is there anybody who wants to volunteer for the alternate traffic safety committee?
We need to get a few more emails.
Yeah.
Go volunteers?
Well, Paisley does go to the chamber, so.
Yeah, she's back to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if need be, I or I have a liaison that will attend.
Is that? I don't know if that would constitute a representative for the planning commission.
We're pretty informal with the traffic safety committee, so.
It's not as long as we're.
Word. Yeah, as long as someone in the room understands what you're at, which is sort of can kind of reflect those, I think it accomplishes the end.
What's the date?
10 AM right now, on the third Friday of the quarter. The next meeting will be April 16th, I think. I don't know if they have special meetings, but right now we're going to get back to this to record.
Well, if I can make it, I'll let you know.
Yeah, I think you can reach out to really any member. We've done it before, so the other boards, so it's not a problem, actually, the commissioners.
The other, and I don't even care if we got a motion for that.
No.
This other one, we will need a motion on, though. The historic preservation board meets monthly, or as needed, usually it's not once a year. And the planning commission has a representative on that. Well, they used to have representatives. He used to have representatives. Charles was the representative for that board. And so we need to recommend to the city commission a new member to replace him. Does anybody have any interests?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a motion for this?
Yes.
I said it.
So yeah, keep an eye on those people. I'll be there soon then. Okay. And that's, that's how it is, is act as a. Act as a liaison between the two boards. That'll be nice.
All right, anything else?
Not on that.
I guess we'll keep moving then.
Right.
Next is the consideration, elected chair, vice chair. One, two, oh, sorry. We already did that, sorry. Move on to the comprehensive plan.
Yep.
We'll take it from here, George.
Yes. I actually kind of wanted to start before we dig into that to give you an update on the kind of public outreach survey. We're still kind of working on that. But I wanted to let you know, we talked about this just briefly right before the meeting. On Saturday, or actually Friday and Saturday, we had a group come down that represented South Dakota State University and Kansas State University. They came down, what they're doing is a kind of a visioning for our downtown area. They, they asked a series of questions, kind of started a discussion. Actually, on Saturday, it was more the other way around. It was more prompting the people that attended to have a figure of each other. And at the end of the conversation, they came up with a listing of ideas. And it's typical of public outreach sort of, or public engagement type of meeting, where you put the ideas on the board, share it with the group, and then at the end, they voted on. Everybody voted on their five favorite items. I honestly didn't get to spend as much time in the room as I wanted because I was open posted. But what they're going to do is after the, after they take it, they'll take it back to South Dakota. And it will kind of compile all the different results that they received, all the different comments. And they also, on top of all of that, they also toured a number of buildings, interviewed some stakeholders separate from that as well. And so what they're going to do is kind of come up with some ideas for downtown. How we can. How we can improve it a little bit. It's a student-led project, so whatever we get is whatever we get. They, we didn't have to pay for anything on that. So it's not necessarily an official city project, but it is something that we can look at. Maybe even incorporate it into the basic plan if we like it. So it's just one to let you know that we have done some attempt at putting some public engagement. And I thought that went really well. Tom was actually part of it that day. So I think there was about 40-ish citizens that ended up attending. So it went really well. I think that it went well enough that I think that we can use that as a model for other potential of engagement, which we may still need to do, what we do really do need to do it for the comprehensive plan. But want to let you know a little bit about that. Again, the surveying is something that we're still kind of working on, trying to figure out. Andrew's going to compile a, what was it, a word cloud of all of the different comments that we got from Arcallala, too. Unfortunately, the way we ask the questions may be part of it, but we got along with one or two word phrases as responses, so it works really well with the word cloud. So we can see what people that participated in Arcallala, what authority is, or what things that we should focus on. It's not something you can't write. I hope of it, of course. But there should be some good highlights to just let us know what people were thinking. The thing about that was, I'm sure we got some people that are not actual citizens that were in town for Arcallala, so they will have, maybe it will get a little bit of a perception as well. Anyways, I don't want to take a whole lot of time tonight. I know we have been meeting, meeting, meeting for over a year. And sometimes these meetings get pretty long. So I don't want to take too much time tonight. And that's part of the reason I chose the two chapters that I chose. I gave everybody a copy of my latest draft that I've been working on based on our conversations. Went over these chapters way back in. I'm thinking this was probably October, November of 2020, when we first went over these two chapters. So it's been a little bit of time since the planning commission talked about that. So what I was going to do was kind of go over what changes I've made, just kind of section by section. I'm not going to do an article to read it. But I did kind of want to go over it. The idea being that we more or less approve and draft as it is. And once we get all of the chapters or topics, if we keep the chapters the way they are, that's up in the air still. If we get them all approved, then we can move the next step, have a public hearing. And once the public hearing is done, then what will happen is that we'll be taken to the city mission. And I will probably do a similar. I don't exactly what it'll look like yet for the city mission. But we will all have a presentation of everything that we went over, throughout the plan. Summary sheet that kind of talks about everything. And I will, by, by here, remember the city commission was to talk about the plan. We'll have probably a work session or something like that. Where we deep into it. They'll have their chance to suggest changes and stuff before it's actually adopted. I'm hoping that we can do that towards the end of summer, which is about a year after I wanted to have it there, by the way. I would have loved to have had us adopted this back last fall. But it just, one thing, another, Andrew and I did not realize how big of a project this really is that we've got into it. It does take a lot of time. But anyways, let's kind of dig into chapter one. And by the way, I did bring full copies of the comprehensive plan of 2013 for our group members. So now they have copies of that. But anyways, on its first page, the only thing I wanted to talk about is what we call the plan. Like, the last one, we called the 2013 plan, and this seems kind of meaningless, maybe, but we need a title. This year, because we have taken like three years to do it, I'm looking for your thoughts. Should we call this the 2021 plan? Or the 2022 plan? Or is that the answer?
The final plan?
The plan to end all plans. I've been using 2021 because that was where the bulk of the work was done, but we're obviously going to go well under 22 before this is adopted, so. Does that probably matter what we call it? Retaining a theory product? So comments on either the other?
I wouldn't say 2020. We're not made it to call it 2022. Is there a reason to date it?
The nice thing about having the date on it is it kind of gives you a guideline of what else. Like, we have the 2006 plan, we have the 2003 plan, we have the 2013 plan. It kind of helps over the long term for your own plan.
That was also a bad first for your job.
Yeah, and it helps to identify them separately when you refer to them in a new plan. It's like I've referred to the 2013 plan in this document.
Sounds like the title. 2022, put it.
You're going back.
All right, we'll go with that. So this first section is just the purpose of the plan. So why in the world do we even write a plan? And honestly, I didn't touch this section from the 2013 plan because it, it's pretty decent the way it was written. It talks about why we develop a plan. It talks about the statute that sets out the reason for creating a plan. By statute, we have to have a comprehensive plan if we're going to have zoning or subdivision regulations. It's the statutory requirement.
So federal or state?
State. It's a state. In fact, the way that the legislation works, there really isn't a federal law that tells you that you can adopt zoning or whatever. Each individual state has what they call an enabling statute. And each state does it just a little bit different. They would have a little bit different way of how they do it. The state also sets how we can. So like every once in a while, they will have like a preemptive statute that where the state, the legislature controls what our regulations can be, and we cannot go live around that. Every once in a while, there's also a federal one. There was a, it was to do with telecommunications tariffs a few years ago. And we changed our, we made amendments to our regulations to match the federal statute.
How usually, how was it required?
There's not really a guideline per se that says you have to rewrite it. But there is a guideline that says that you are supposed to review it on an annual basis. We don't really do that, to be totally honest. But something we should do, we should be reviewing it on a regular basis. I think the way that we're proposing to bring this one with the goals, the way that they're going to be written, I think it'd be easier for us to do it. We could probably have a session in like December or a year where we take part of the meeting and we just discuss, hey, we need to learn your goals this year, which is a good idea.
Yeah, milestones. Deadlines.
To make that accountable. And you can amend it at that commit, too, if you need to. So that's kind of what that first thing is. It's all about the purpose, just establishing why, why we even have a plan, what the plan is, what it does, that sort of thing. Anybody have any questions or concerns about that one? I didn't envision a whole discussion on this part. Which is why we could go through this pretty quick. The next section is about goals and strategies, and really, again, notable and a change there, except we may want to change the wording on this to match the fact that we're changing how we write the goals and actions. This plan, if you reviewed it very much, it has like a set of, it has like a stated goal, and then it has actions on how you're supposed to get there. We've had this debate over the course of studying the plan, how well that worked. Did it work the greatest? Because a lot of the actions are not hardly measurable.
From my experience on these type of plans, states are very important. It's kind of organized and timed, right? Not just what to be done, but where. It might be something we could consider.
And that's, that's what I've started to do. I've been working on, just a side note, I've been working on the housing chapter the past couple of weeks, because that's a topic that we'll probably look at next. And I was looking at a way to make that work. Can I think I have like a chart or something? We'll look at it, and then for each goal, we'll probably have to say, do we think this is short-term, long-term? And we'll just go through each one of those. That's why I think once we get past this month, we can focus on one topic. We don't want to go, we don't want to put much more on a meeting than that because, well, first of all, we don't want to be here till the hours of the morning. All right, so the next section was all about Arc City history. The, the chapter, or I'm sorry, the 2013 plan had a pretty decent rundown of kind of the history of the city. But the historic preservation board went through their walking tour last year in 2020 and found a whole bunch of information that just wasn't quite accurate, this plan. And so Boss Farrow is my primary person that did this. Went back, I had him kind of edit this to kind of match what we talked about in the, in that plan. And in addition to that, because in 2013, we didn't really have, well, actually, no, it didn't. It existed, I don't remember exactly when we started that. But we didn't have a nice little write-up of the plan. It wasn't, it wasn't even thought. And when we went through this originally, and the first one, Drew, really wanted us to have a little paragraph about it. It's, because it's a part of our history. And so that, that's been put in there, too. And again, the little decades, the way this is written, edited from the 2013 plan to match new, new research. He also noted that there was actually more than one land run. And so there's a little bit about that, just, just a little side note about. But it talks about how the city, you know, had that big explosive growth there for those few weeks while the people were here. And it's an important part of our history. It's part of why our city is, is here today, so that was put in there. And then as you go through the next several decades, I didn't do a whole lot with it. Most of that was borrowed from the, believe it or not, the 1964 comprehensive plan. Most of it was just reused because, for the most part, it was pretty accurate. You know, it's talking about all our different booms and busts that happened over the years, but what made Arc City, Arc City?
How well were the old plans followed? They meet their goals or? In other words, how do we compare to previous?
There's, I was just reading through the 64 plan recently, partially because I was looking through this. There's some stuff in there that, there's like, where did I come up with that? Because it didn't happen. I thought one particular thing was interesting, and in the 60s, they were talking about the bypass. That was long before we had our bypass, he said, yeah. There, it was actually on the west side of town. I don't really know why, and there wasn't a good explanation for that. And on the east side, there was not a bypass, but it was like a scenic road, so there was like a circle. Could actually make a circle, which was, would have been interesting if we had that, but that never actually went anywhere. And it's, of course, it's hard to look at a plan that old and really discover if, how well the goals were met, but definitely the comprehensive plans of the past are not the same thing that we do today.
So they failed really hard.
Especially to say that, I don't think that they.
That'll feel so bad.
They really didn't meet goals any better than we do now.
Well, it makes it feel a little better.
Well, and, you know, sometimes even the best laid plans, what's the expression? Best laid plans don't work out. I'll think of that quote after I go home. Quote that?
Go arrive.
Yes, that's. So moving on. The next section talked about our population. So again, we're looking at some of the historic, where our population was, the way this one goes back into the 60s. When we were a city of 14,000. But as you can, if you look at that chart, it's bottom of page seven. The population of Arc City has not changed very much over the past 60 years. Should have been right around that 12 to 14,000 range. In fact, if, I think if you go back further than the 60s, it was approximately the same. It's always been kind of around that area. If you go back far enough, the population was a little bit lower. I've seen the chart. Essentially, we have not changed a whole lot of the population. There's been some good times and some bad times. The 60s probably was, well, the packing plants were all roaring, the frying trees were all still kind of here, so that probably why the city was a little bit bigger. Back then, then we had the packing plant closing and all those different, frying trees all closing. We've had our up and downs, but. And as we discovered in the 2020 census, I still believe that we were, we were undercounted a little bit. I think we were over 12,000. But because of the pandemic, we had so little. And not only that, I think we have a number of cases when people underreported because they didn't want people to, they didn't want the government to know how many people lived in their house. That's a, that's a thing that's going to happen forever. But the point of this section is just to show the trends that have happened in the past and what the trends going forward are. In the 2013 plan, the trend looked really if you see that strength, it had us all the way down below 10,000 by 2040. Well, I looked at WSQ. They do, they have like a business research, economic development research center. And there's, it's a quite, it's a little bit better. It's talking about some of the recent trends we have, it works right through. Like Creekstone is booming right now. As we'll discuss with housing, we have a housing shortage. Probably if we didn't have the housing shortage, we would be, we might be 13,000 for all I know. So I think that there's going to be a little bit of a jump, and this agrees with that. It will probably have a little bit of a jump over the next five to 10 years.
The grant that's been awarded to Arc City for housing, is that right? It's a $400,000 grant, which we'll pick up Thursday?
Might be three.
Three? I couldn't remember if it was three or $400,000. Nick, how will that affect this group?
What that grant is going to do is it's going to focus on one neighborhood. So it will, it's focused on the neighborhood that's Kansas, Oklahoma, Colorado, up there. That was the target area. We had to pick a target area for rehab. And what that grant will be used for is to rehab hopefully 12 houses in that neighborhood. About $25,000 apiece. So we'll be looking at stuff like making sure that they have good roof on there, fixing their siding. Mostly exterior stuff, fixing their windows. We're also going to tag team, we have a weatherization program that can kind of help with it. So if there's some, some individuals that have issues with their heating and cooling, then we can kind of tie that into this project and do it all at the same time. So that's, that's the idea of that grant, is to focus on the smaller target areas to try to keep individual neighborhoods from sight too far.
What's the criteria for selecting? Orders of neighborhoods that are?
Well, what happened was. Well, what happened was, there was this, it started with a study from 2010, I think it was, that the county did. They identified some kind of areas in, with all the cities of the county, really. And so what we did was we looked at those areas, and we kind of, we did surveying, like a windshield survey, tacking, and tried to figure out where some of the houses were the worst. So we, we, we did that survey, we identified that some, some areas around town where there was housing that was declining, which is what I'm saying. And then what happened was SCAD, our grant administrator, came in and kind of reviewed our results. And because they've done these grants a number of times and knew what it took to, to actually get them, they kind of focused on that one great, as being a really good one to start with. When, the way it worked, I think it's about every two to three years, you're going to apply for a new one. And so the idea is that you pick a good one to start with, find some success with it, and then move to the next step. And hopefully over the course of a decade or so, which is a long time trying to housing, but money, we talked about money before. Slowly, the idea is that you're going to keep a neighborhood from declining, stabilize it.
Use a fine neighborhood that you think is the most, it work and it's a basic criteria.
Aren't those all dirt roads on those?
Um.
Look at the maps now.
Colorado is.
Yeah.
But, but Kansas and Oklahoma are.
Do you think there'd be a conflict with, let's say, you know, why does Joe get a new roof?
Could be. What, what, way it works is what we did to, that's part of the census, is we had, we had a neighborhood meeting with all the people that were in that target area. And they filled out pre-applications for the grant. What that did was that gave our grant administrator a little bit of a picture of whether or not this would work. And we got enough pre-applications from the neighborhood that worked, which is why we got the grant. And now what they'll have to do is they will have to apply, again, or they'll have to do a formal application. And I'm not sure if that's going to be a bell on their aunt. We're, we're still in the early stages of that. But I think our administrator is going to be doing most of it, the kind of vetting, make sure that they actually meet the income, no, that's the other thing. It is income qualifying, it's a federal grant, so.
So it only applies to homeowners, not rentals?
So, no, no, they don't, they don't, they're all applied to rentals too. They can, they can also apply. Because what it is based on is not, in that case, it's not the landlord's income, it is the income of the tenant. And then they're forced to keep their rent at a certain level for us.
Okay.
I think it's like three or something like that.
So that's what I'm getting at is economic gain from the landlord, but it sounds like it's going to be, not going to be passed on to the landlord, it's going to be passed on to tenants if it's rent adjusted.
That's all right, if you look at it.
Everybody wins.
Yeah, yeah, I ultimately agree with you. I agree, but, you know, some, some tenants may struggle with filling out the landlord, things like that.
So even from a landlord perspective, if they're going to put a roof on, I'm going to fill out the paperwork and all they're going to do is sign it. So I'm going to do whatever it takes for these people to fill out that paperwork, so I get a new roof on my property. So it's no different than a lot of these tenants that can't pay rent because of COVID or whatever. We fill out paperwork for them, so they can pay rent. It's like you said, they struggle with paperwork. And half it's just because they don't want to do the paperwork. So if Sarah and Morgan spend a lot of time doing paperwork, then they sign their names, so.
My concern is you have a, it's fine for landlords that live within Arc City, but to have a public housing grant, go for the economic gain of citizens that don't live within Arc City. Hopefully there's criteria covering those concerns, I imagine there probably is, but you know, I do agree with Brandon, it's win-win both sides. Contractor gets to approve his house, because I know the rent in Arc City is, I know it's, it's probably hard to make, make a good profit off, off off of some of these houses based on, you know, just the the economy of the towns, it's probably a little lower than this in the areas.
That's, that's the goal, it's a, it's a piecemeal approach to a very, very large. Hopefully, piggybacks.
If you do not notice, people, but people are what?
Funny.
Did a grant one year, you have to pay, reimburse people for putting a safe room on their property. They're all happy about that. Do some work, there was paperwork. I'm not going to do your paperwork for your property, you're going to do your paperwork for your property. And I had a guy ask me, why am I having to do this? Because it's your safe room, not mine. And then, so he got his safe room and he sold the house, not today, that we got it. The grant. Again, that's, that's where my concern is, you know, if we're going to get a grant for Arc City, let's try to keep that in Arc City, but it's a contract.
Well, that's the thing too, if, under this program, if you were to sell it, I'm sure this one happened in 2016 too, based on you have to pay back a pro-rated portion of that if you sell it too early.
I'll actually have all the bases covered.
Well, again, it's a, it's a CBG grant, so it's a federal grant, it's all of these overarching requirements, and it's.
Knew that with the safe room, because I thought the value of the safe room was more for the new tenant than it would have been. It's a wash. I have one more question about that. Is there like a committee or a board decides who receives the grant?
That is still kind of up in the air, how it's going to be handled. I have to go to a workshop in Eureka in a couple of weeks. And I'm sure that's one of the topics we talked about, is how we're going to determine who is going to actually receive it. Yeah, I know we get a process of sorts, it's something like that's going to look like, yeah. So finally, on that session, it's just an update on the census. So we're talking about what our, like our racial makeup is, our age makeup, household size, that sort of stuff. Now, so this data is basically just from the census. Now, this is not a 2020 census data, because I still haven't gotten all the 2020 census data on houses and stuff. So this is from the American Community Survey, but it, that's the same missing information. It's just a little higher margin of error. I've been there, I don't know what to do about this age table, because I still haven't found a comfortable table. So I don't know if that'll end up staying in there, or we'll, I'll take that out, but basically that's all this is, it's just data from the census. This final section of this chapter is just a summary, and this is kind of why I said it's nice to have the year in front of the comprehensive plan title. It's just a summary of past plans, so what, what we've done in the past. And really, this one is just focused on the immediately previous plan, that's the way the last one was done too. So what I did is I kind of went through what was in there from the last one, and looked at the 2013 plan and to see what was in it, what was, and what's important about the 13 plan that we need to do a very, very brief summary on, because that's all this is. And it talks about how it was created. Like, the first thing, it says that it's a successor to lots of other plans. So we're just building on the old plan. And then it also had, it talked about a number of surveys and studies. Sadly, again, we haven't had a whole lot of surveying done for this new one yet. We've got to do something, have to do some surveying and some public input before we can finalize this plan. And then, well, and that's kind of what Brandon talks about, what, what we're doing, we're using that flash book platform. We've used it for a couple of different chapters, a couple of different topics. Explain what it was, that sort of thing. And then I talk about how we came up with the plan, how we formulated it, how it was discussed. In 2013, the way we did it was with a steering committee. And it was just a group of individuals that were brought together in a room, and the steering committee put together basically the entire plan. And once, once they were finished with it, it went to the planning commission, and the planning commission kind of got an overview of everything that the steering committee did. There was at least a couple of planning commissioners that were actually on the steering committee, so there was a guy there. And that's how that worked, it worked okay. But this time, what we decided to do at staff was, instead of having a separate steering committee, this is the steering committee. And to build a consensus with other groups, what we did was we went to our hores. So we staff met with beautification board, obviously more about parks and stuff like that, met with equal opportunity board, and of course, that covers multiple topics. They kind of go over, so we're talking, because we need to figure out a way to make sure we're meeting the ADA plan as well. And so we're, we hope to have that show up in this plan too, that we have this ADA plan, we have a way to make a community more accessible to everybody. So there's, there's a, a bit of that in there. We also met with the historic preservation board, there's a whole section on historic preservation in chapter five. And again, they worked on the, the introduction that I was talking about before, so they, they had some input there. And then we also talked with the traffic safety committee on that for transportation. We're still working through that transportation plan process. And so they'll, they'll still have a part of that. And then ultimately, yeah, all that comes back to the planning commission. And then the planning commission makes the recommendations. It's the city commission's plan, it's the city's plan. The city commission is the one that ultimately adopts it. So that's what that whole section was about, just, just a summary of how the plan was created. That is chapter one in a nutshell. There's not a whole lot of really in-depth study or, it's, it's, it's not a plan, it's just introducing what, what the plan is. And it's a really high-level background, that is all introductions meant to be, and that's pretty much what it is. So, does anybody have any concerns about what I put into this introduction? I feel like there needs to be anything, it's not in there.
There was one line. Sorry, I'm not interrupting anyone anymore.
You're fine.
Okay, there was one line when it's describing the chamber that I felt like, I don't know if it got, I don't know, there's a part that kind of cuts off funny.
Oh, that's probably in chapter two. And we're going to talk about chapter two.
Okay, sorry, getting ahead of myself.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll make sure that we get to that, so there's something on that section. We'll touch on it. So maybe what you're suggesting is that we, in this chapter, we have a little section that explains what we're trying to do with the milestones, is that kind of what you're talking about here?
Well, it's like, it needs to follow the action. If we have an action and no deadline, it's bad.
That's what, that's what we'll have it in each chapter. That's, that's my goal, is to have, after we focused on, like, say, just because that's one, it's kind of my, the hot one that we're kind of and at the end of the chapter, we'll have, we'll have a section that talks about what, what actions we'd like to see, what goals we want to have. And actually have the milestones, especially with that. So whether, whether it's a couple of years, whether it's long-term.
Yeah, I just, anytime you have a planned schedule.
So I agree, that's. So if any, nobody really has any objections to chapter one, more, let's consider that to be your approval for it. It's still a draft, it's not like you're approving it tonight, nothing like that. But the main thing is I wanted to cover it, quite frankly, so we could watch. So we can get, get to focusing on rounding out a plan and putting into it, is, we can talk about a plan all day long, but if we never go through that, then what was it?
The only, I don't think this is a native, the only comment about the, this section was, I thought it focused too much on population. And I skimmed through it two or three times, looking for how could that be improved, and I couldn't come up with a good solution for improving it. But I still thought it was too weighted for population.
Well, and the thing about it is, we could even consider taking part of that out, because in chapter two, there was a discussion again about the same thing. Honestly, it was in the 13 plan, and I just didn't take it out.
The comment I was going to make is a positive, is I was glad that you could get incorporated in the census paper, because people worked way hard to get what council got counted. So I was happy to see it made some benefit, although it was a, it was, yeah, but still, yeah, it was a benefit, we got the person there included in the plan.
I can kind of look at that. Kind of consider, because there, there is going to be a little bit of rapid change in chapter two, so. Now, I do think we've made at least a a small section that's related to the census in this chapter, but I, I don't necessarily agree with you.
Small is okay, but it seemed like it said it, and then it said it again, even more detailed one, and.
Anybody else have a comment, one way or the other on that?
So this is one way you measure community's growth, so.
Yeah, it is important to have it in the plan, certainly.
What is the purpose of the, of this segregating of races in the mess? Really, what is, what is that purpose?
That's just to get a picture of the community, that's the only reason I said that.
I think the census is pretty inaccurate.
I think we did it over.
I know. A lot of work, but people just don't want it.
It, it was tough for people, physically, verbally, saying, I'm going to be counting you off, leave.
Right, I know they did a lot of that.
I said, I'll take that into consideration and.
You will, other than just a.
Yeah, honestly, that's what I did, I just changed what was in there. Yeah, honestly, that's what I did. I just changed what was in there. I think that's what it's. Okay, are we ready to move on to chapter two? So the way that most of the chapters start is they, and this one is no different, is it starts out with kind of an introduction that explains what the whole purpose of the chapters. And so that's, that's kind of where it even starts. The, the whole purpose of this chapter, I mean, we kind of introduce what, what we're doing here. The, the focus of this chapter is to tell the reader, that's ideally the reader that's never been to Arc City before, just a little bit about what the community is. What, what is it, how we're made up, what we have to offer. That's everything. It's not, it's not so much about making a big plan, it's about telling a story.
And giving Elton John a reason to visit.
Giving Elton John a reason to actually visit, yes.
Is he from here?
No. He thought he was for 15 minutes.
Did y'all hear about that, Selena's?
No, I did not.
So go on Facebook and make a post and tag Elton John, Arc City KS.
I don't do Facebook.
I'll Google it when I get. What happened was he accidentally, or somebody and his team, accidentally tweeted that he had a great time in Arkansas City at his most recent concert. Oh, he was in Kansas.
In Kansas City.
But it was very clearly said, Arkansas City, not Kansas. So.
Not to be confused with Arkansas City, Arkansas. I was happy to jump on that and make it clear that it is pound Arc City.
And then, and then showed up that it was like Arkansas City. Were there anything complimented? Not even a spot. But it's a fun day, seriously.
On, on that kind of stuff, just the fact that we can have a little bit of fun. And it brings us positive attention to our community. I think it's just great that he made that mistake, and I'm happy to take advantage of it. I'm sure you had a lot of hits over the website.
So that, again, that's what this is about. It's about telling our story, so. So this, basically what this does, like this next section is about our character. So it's, it's just a really brief introduction to what we have to offer. So that again, mentions the festivals that we have. It talks about preferreds, so those kind of performing arts venues that we have. There's some mentions of some celebrities that are associated with Arc City, so like, like it talks about Governor Goffe was from Arc City. And then it mentions like Darren Dalton, Lionel Hollins, Leslie Doherty, those type of people. So it's, it's just kind of a fun little thing. And then we discovered that Elizabeth Taylor.
Yeah, I did, I did read that briefly.
And she actually attended Roosevelt's.
She says she did not.
Oh, really? Well, her, we know her grandparents lived here. That's always really helpful, for sure. But yeah, it was just the, just a little tidbit that kind of makes people think, though, well, maybe I want to go see where Elizabeth Taylor lived for, supposedly, for a month or something. You'd be surprised, people visit towns for strange reasons. But that's, that's the idea of that section. Just a really brief summary of what the community had. So the next one, the next section to four is the results from our community survey. Well, this is one of the surveys that we actually have done, that talked about community character. And don't get too confused by what's on here, because it's a bunch of strait throughs, because that's what we're moving from the plan, that's the old survey. The new one, basically, it was about needs and priorities that we see in the community. So really, what you want to do is go to the next page. And I don't know how to display this. I don't really like how this looks, but the graphic designer, let's work on this a little bit more. I'm not a graphic designer. But the whole idea was, we, we asked a couple of questions, and what I did was I picked out those questions that kind of fit this section the most. Let's see. Where is the actual question? Oh, I guess it's in the first paragraph. Been too long since I looked at this. The citizens were asked to consider quality of life and to identify the most important reasons for living in Arc City. Hopefully, a few of you were able to participate in the survey. But that first section there, it talked about, it shows all different options that were available on that survey. And so we can see a few things, like sense of community, small town feel was really, really important to the respondents. I'll take surprise there. Overall, community parents with a little bit less interest, that was not a big deal for them. Feeling safe, the physical safety and security was also extremely important to the response, so. The whole big surprise is there, I think. And we talked about this briefly when we took the survey.
So when I look at the on the options, it says cost of availability of housing, and then I'm not quite sure why you take out the the response and all those. Maybe, maybe I'm just misinterpreting. But when I read that, it says cost of availability of housing, and then it says boats, 26%, but there's not really answer on it.
Oh, what, the way that question was set up is you got to pick which of these options were most important to you.
Oh, okay.
And so 20% of the respondents said this. Yeah, yeah, I think it was pick three.
Okay. So these are the items that are most important to.
Right.
Okay.
So not necessarily what's the most important item to you is the respondent, it's what's the most important thing on this list.
Okay.
And the next question talked about more like priorities that they wanted us to focus on as a city. So I noted, I summarized, it noted that the option to support local business development and growth had the most support of all. While maintaining infrastructure and keeping up, the parents also gained quite a lot of support. There was a few things that maybe were a little bit less important to people. Like this particular one, reducing homelessness was really low. Probably because they didn't see homelessness as an issue. That's probably, that's the only reason that would be that low, I'm sure. The rest of that, I'm probably, for just perception. So what's your perception that was wrong with the community? And that's the kind of things that we should focus on. So it's just a high-level, both of these, they're just supposed to be high-level questions to, well, mostly to illustrate that we actually did survey people to figure out what, what people thought. There was also some open-ended questions, or some open-ended responses. But didn't want to put that all in this one section. And so what we'll do is we'll add all the different surveys that we took, they'll be appendices to the plan. So that way, if someone really wants to know every, every response to their question, which is fine. They can look at it, but it's not taking up a whole lot of space. So that, like I said, that was one survey we actually got. Oh, and I also pointed out my little comment there. We may, I may also, if we can figure out how to do it. There's a word cloud that was associated with these, with the final question, that it was open-ended. And I'm thinking about including that as well. And the nice thing about the word cloud is it picks out all the occurrences of certain words. The more, if you're familiar with it, the more times the word showed up, the bigger it is. So I don't remember what the big word was in this one, but it's probably something like housing or something homeless. So it's a really high-level way of figuring out what people's performance is. You don't, you don't make decisions, make some of that kind of thing, but it's, it's a, it's a nice thing just to give you a big, high-level view. So kind of the next section talks about our social institutions. So it starts off with, with our local government. And so what this section does is it talks about how, how the city of Arc City is governed. We have a city manager commission form of government. Explain that, it says how many people work here, what our departments are, that sort of thing. And then this next section, this still under government, goes into just a little bit more detail of how the, oh, you've pulled it up. Talks a little bit more about what the different departments do. Again, just high-level stuff, summarizing what the city can do for you, sort of thing. All the different services that we offer. And each department got a little bit of a mention. Some of them chose to contribute a little more, like the fire department contributed a little bit more information, so we can think of a little bit of section. But the idea was just a few paragraphs talking about what they do as a department. And some of them actually did a little bit about what their successes were, that kind of stuff, what, what their goals are as a department, so. So fire, fire, and then police did that. And then it kind of split off from there into some of our other institutions that we have in town. Like the library had a little section. Again, the same thing, we're talking about what it is, where it is, what it can offer. Then I also talked to our educational institutions, so I got a little information from the school district. They talked about each of their schools, and what's, what's kind of nice about this section is it also talks about their enrollment. So we're, we're learning how a little bit about how many students we have, our different trends, what they're expecting. Their master plan, by any stretch, is not a part of this plan. So we're not really focusing on what they're wanting to do there. But it does have just a little, it'll brief mention of, of kind of what they're doing, what their mission is. Did the same thing for preschools and our private schools, there's a little sort of section on, on the different private schools we have. Couldn't, don't have a lot of information about the private schools, because I didn't get a lot of information from the private schools. The ACTA got a little bit more of a notice, because I had more information. But that, all it is is that they information they provided. Same thing with the college. They provided a summary of what they do, what they offer. That's where the, the whole point of this is that everybody was trying to show what it is that, that they have. And obviously, when somebody decides to move to the city schools, particularly, they're going to. And so just having a mention of what schools we have is, is important to have included in this chapter. But we also have smaller institutions than make our city what our city is. So like we, I mentioned the chamber. And now we're through that chamber section, Paisley, if you wanted to tell me what it was that we needed to change.
It just seemed like, yeah, it just seemed like the wording, that last line, it says, it is important as well. Oh, never mind. Now that I'm reading it again out loud, it is important as well in facilitating communication among members. Okay, the first time I read it, it seemed weird.
This is how it ended up being learned.
Yeah.
Oh, that the chamber is important as well, because it facilitates communication. Yeah, maybe that would help. But I, so what I did was, I, you know, we have the things for the chamber, there's a little brief section on Visit Arc City. Because they changed the name from CBB to Visit Arc City, so I wanted to remove that, explain what it is. But it is still, it mentioned visitors period, they just changed the name to reflect what their mission is. Senior Center was mentioned. Very, very briefly, we mentioned that Arc City is the home for the area agency, AGI. It's kind of a nice facility for us to have in our community. And Senior Center is too, for the same, that's a good reason. But that's just the resources. That's what that was about, showing what resources we have. So if a senior wanted to come live in Arc City, there's, there's a senior center there, so. AGI needs to be here, so they have some resources. And then we talked about the preferred little bits. I updated it, because when we did the last plan, it was still in rehab. And so I moved the reference to the rehab, because it's been rehabbed. And talked just a little bit about what it's offering, museum, same thing. A lot of this, the next section wasn't even changed, because there wasn't a need to change what they, in here, because it's correct. So the museum, the rec commission. And then there's a brief section at the end that just talks about our civic groups like Laika, Guanis, stuff, just, just the fact that they exist. The community didn't really talk about what they do or anything, just, just that they're here. And again, there is one more section. So. Yeah. There's one more section, talks about religious institutions. Obviously, we are in the Bible Belt, and we have lots of churches, and you know, that's sometimes what people are going to want to. Is to know that that is part of our community. Who didn't focus on it real heavily, just, just noted that we have a lot of churches here. Take your pick on what you want, because we have it, sort of that. And that's what that was about. And then for some reason, that last paragraph that I just struck out, I don't even know what it was for. I was in the 13 plan, it's about making sense where it is. It had nothing to do with religious institutions. And I can't figure out where we're supposed to go, so. Yeah. I just thought, like, got rid of it.
Oh, char, characters, objective, I would, I'd recommend just being careful, you know, stick to the facts. Kind of like the reader pulling it over.
So my question on this chapter, is there anything that, well, I guess two ways. Is there stuff in there that shouldn't be in there about our community? And is there stuff that should be in there that's not, that tells the story of our community?
I, like I said, I would just stick to the facts and try and.
I think that's kind of the goal here, and then again, this isn't about, this is part of the plan, but it's not a plan.
You might offend somebody with the atheist, like recreation. You know, if you say, well, recreation is very important, you know, to the community, they might disagree with that. That's just.
Well, and that's yeah, that'd be part of my paragraph, because it's really long there, too. But again, this isn't, this isn't about, it's exactly two things. It's not about coming up with opinions or big goals or anything. It's just telling the story. It's part of every comprehensive plan that I've ever seen. There's, there's always a section that.
It's important to let people know what we offer.
So that being said.
I have a question for you. If somebody was to use the Arc City, I mean, is this this will be on the website?
Yep, it's, the current one is accessible is it's honestly, it's not the first thing that people come to Arc City looking at. We need it available, but like if somebody comes to town and they give me a call and they have a question, I'm not handing them a copy. Nothing like that. But the fact of the matter, some people, you'd be surprised how much research they do before they talk to us. And sometimes people will look for stuff like documents. Because the Chamber of Commerce offers their stuff and their city offers their kind of stuff. But sometimes just learning a little bit about what the community is, you need to look at a document that somebody created.
Yeah.
Some people are
I agree. That's a decision.
I think when I moved down here, I was, and of course I was coming to work for the city. But I definitely did a lot of research on the city before I came down. It was important to me.
I think we could say a little bit more about Cali College and their national ratings and the sports and that kind of thing. I think they, I think there could be more in there about Cali.
Well, that's, that's what they supplied me with in that section. They really didn't talk about their athletics so much.
I didn't say a lot, but I mean, and that changes year to year, but I think we have a really nice facility.
That was a big part of our identity. Like it or hate it, the college is here and it is, it's important to our economy, quite frankly. So that being said, what my intention is over the next six months or so is to bring a chapter, basically, I'm saying chapter because that's the way the plan is set. And we don't have to have exactly the same chapter. But bring a topic to each month. And we will discuss what's what have been made. But what I really want to focus on each meeting is the goals. That's the most important part because we've, we've talked about, we
Yeah, I agree.
On some of these topics. What we need to do is focus on each one and find out what what's important, what we want to see as a community. So my, my idea is next month, we have to. We did a whole lot of stuff on housing last summer, mostly related to the plan. So I don't think we need to talk about housing so much, but we need to talk about what what we want to see as goals for housing. So we'll, we'll bring the study that we did for the grant, the housing assessment tool. That and basically that whole, everything that we learned as part of the housing grant. So we kind of did a housing plan because we had to for the grant. So it should, that chapter should be pretty simple. The topic's not simple enough in order to, it is. And it should be pretty easy for us to come with a set of plans or a set of goals, sorry. And decide how important each one is, so what the priority is for each different section. And we may decide that certain goals that were mentioned are not as important as, as what we thought and maybe they should
Yeah, you have new members, so.
So I will talk about, I will definitely still give an overview of what the chapter is, but I don't intend to even do what I did tonight. Quite frankly, I think that probably is pretty boring. But it is important for these chapters because there is a goal section to either one of them. It's just, we need to focus on what we want to see in the plan. Give the plan some identity. That's what these two chapters are really about, which is put them together.
So any other discussion or?
I had a question about whole survey update. Was there mechanical, kind of do you somehow paracole?
Yeah, we, we're currently in the middle of the evaluation. We're waiting on reports to come back from the CPR.
Okay.
Ground penetrating radar, go with the gap, analyze the data and stuff. Soon as they get their report back, but I don't know if this is all right for them, but I'll say that at this point, we think was is repairable. So I can't, I'm not going to go any further than that till all the data is compiled for evaluation. And then that's actually just my opinion, that it's up to commissioners and townspeople to make that decision. So I'm just, I'm going to put the facts out there and the elected officials make that decision.
So before we can share with this, as far as the data, I'm kind of curious.
Um, you know, that's up to the commissioners if they're fine with it. I mean, I'll give the data to them, they can put it on the public website or the public, whatever they want to do.
We're not quite to that point either, so.
Yeah.
That sounds
Yeah.
It's still intended to be a very open process, the discussion, as much as we can, maybe. All different entities here affected by stakeholders.
There's three other discussions. There's a motion to adjourn.
We are.